I will now call to order the Withfull Town Council meeting Monday, December 9th, 2024 at 5:00 PM in the Municipal Building at 150 East Monroe Street, Withfull, Virginia. We do have a quorum. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance led by Councilwoman Holly Atkins.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands on one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next is the approval of the agenda.
Madam Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to amend the agenda to discuss the appointment of an interim town manager and to add a closed meeting according to State Code 2.2-3711A1 to hold discussion regarding the discipline of an employee of the public body.
All right, so I have a recommendation. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Right here or none? This should be a roll call vote. Mr. Gilman?
Gilman, aye.
Patterson, aye.
Taylor, aye.
I'm sorry, I thought, I'm sorry.
Atkins, aye.
Johnson, aye.
All right, so that motion passes. FYI, it's 6:00 PM. We can have recess if necessary. And next is a consent agenda, which consists of the minutes of the work session of November 12th, 2024, and the regular meeting of November 25th, 2024. I need a motion?
So moved.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Right here or none? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye as well. Any opposed? Here are none. Ayes have it. So now we have a very special note that we'd like to do. I need you.
No, you don't.
Would you come my way, please, sir?
[laughing]
All right, anybody hear me? In case anybody didn't know, this is his very last meeting with Withfull Town Council, and we've been very pleased and very fortunate to have him all these last four years. So whereas the Withfull Town Council desires to express its appreciation for the service of Councilman Gary Gilman to the Withfull Town Council, and whereas Councilman Gilman served on the Town Council for a period of four years from July 1st, 2020 to December 31st, 2024, and whereas during Councilman Gilman's term, he served on the Public Works Committee, the Budget and Finance Committee, the Withfull Recreation Commission, Downtown Withfull Incorporated, and as an alternate member of the District III Government Corporal. And whereas Councilman Gilman worked faithfully and diligently to help develop services and projects that would be of great benefit to the town citizens, including but not limited to the sidewalk extension project on Taswell Street, various water and sewer infrastructure projects, and the addition of police officers for public safety. And whereas Councilman Gilman was instrumental in helping to keep the downtown vibrant and alive by supporting Downtown Withfull Incorporated and the Millwall Theater. And whereas Councilman Gilman is the funeral director of Barrett Funeral Home and is highly respected in his profession. And whereas the Withfull Town Council, through the adoption of this resolution, expresses an esteemed respect and appreciation. Now therefore be it resolved that the Town Council of the Town of Withfull, Virginia officially commends and recognizes Councilman Gary L. Gilman for his excellent and loyal service to the town. Be it further resolved that the Town Council of the Town of Withfull, Virginia extend to Councilman Gilman its sincere and best wishes for future success. This is adopted this day, December 2024, by Beth A. Taylor, Mayor. And I'm going to tell you, we forgot to do the adoption first, so we need to back up and do that.
Sure.
So from, I need a motion?
I make a motion. We approve the resolution.
Do I have a motion? Do I have a second? Motion and second. Any discussion? All right, here in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Now it's official.
[laughing]
Send those kids up here. Somebody take some pictures. Oh, Elaine's back there. She's going to take your picture. All right.
Hey, buddy.
Y'all get up there and get your picture.
Come here.
Come next to Grandpa.
Cheers.
Say cheese.
Say cheese.
Thank you, guys. Congratulations. Thank you all so much. No more else.
You won.
Thank you.
All right, next on the agenda, we are in an 8A to consider the request of Mr. Kerry Eames for the traffic control on Sunday, January 19th, 2025, to conduct the Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. March. Unless, do you have anything to add to that, Elaine?
No, ma'am.
All right, so I need a motion?
So moved.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Right here, none. I will need a vote to consider by the Town Council to approve the request of Mr. Kerry Eames for traffic control on Sunday, which I believe is at 2:00 PM, January 19th, 2025, to conduct the Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. marches. I have a motion? Motion and second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, any opposed? That passes. Next is to consider reappointing Ms. Kathy Lassiter to the Withfull Economic Development Authority. Term expires December 12th, 2024. I have a motion?
So moved.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and second. Any discussion? Right here, none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye as well. Any opposed? That motion passes. Next is to consider the reappointing of Mr. Jeffrey R. Lucas to the Joint Industrial Development Authority of With County, the JIDA. Term expires December 31st, 2024. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Right here, none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye as well. Any opposed? That motion passes. Next is to consider the establishment of the personal property tax reimbursement rate as 30.03%. And today we have Town Treasurer Angela Pennington to come to the podium and explain this to council.
Good evening, everyone. Okay, so every year, the council has to establish the personal property tax.
Angela, can you bring the mic up to you, please?
Can you hear me? Hello, hello? Go in, please. Okay. So each year, the council has to establish the personal property tax reimbursement rate. And in June, it was adopted at 36.48%, which is what last year's rate was. We have the same amount of funding as we did the past couple of years, which is $61,075.92. However, since we did have the lower amounts of vehicles last year that was left out of the book, their numbers are back up to a more normal range, so the percentage is going to go down to 30.03% for the 2024 tax year.
Does anybody have any questions, Angela?
And just looking at the numbers, since our numbers are back up and the reassessment rates have gone back, have gone up and our total vehicles are up, we should expect more revenue this year than last year. So a good bit.
Okay. All right, there's no other questions. Ms. Pendleton, we'll consider by the Town Council to establish the personal property tax reimbursement rate as 30.03%. I need a motion?
So moved.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and second. Is there any further discussion? Right here, none. This will be a roll call vote. We'll start with Councilwoman Johnson.
Johnson, Atkins, aye.
Taylor, aye.
Patterson, aye.
Gilman, aye.
All right, motion passes.
I do have one quick question. I just wanted, I know we had talked about a couple of meetings ago about maybe looking at changing the dates. I just still want to make sure maybe we were looking into that still. Just wanted to keep that on the books if that's okay.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, awesome. Thank you.
Whatever y'all want to consider, we will do what y'all want to do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks very much.
All right, next on the agenda is to consider approving a resolution supporting the concept of a splash pad in downtown Withfull. We have a presentation for us by Elaine.
As you recall at the last meeting, actually at the last several meetings, we have been discussing the concept of a splash pad for the Town of Withfull. And the group Salt and Light, which is a nonprofit, has been working with town staff on a feasibility study and some other ideas around this project. One request was that the Town Council consider doing a resolution in support of the splash pad. The purpose of the resolution is general in nature, and it's to assist this nonprofit with fundraising. At this time, there are no funds appropriated or proposed. It's just a general resolution. In your packet, you should have a copy of the resolution, and if you want, I can read it, but I will leave that up to the Town Council.
I think for the sake of the, please read it.
Sure. Okay, so the resolution states, whereas the Town of Withfull is committed to high-quality recreational assets that encourage physical activity in play for all ages of the community, and whereas the Town Council recognizes that splash pads are now popular with newer generations, and that a new splash pad for Withfull has the potential to provide a unique form of recreation for the children of the community, and whereas the Town Council is aware of the health, recreational, and economic benefits of splash pads for the community of Withfull, and whereas the nonprofit organization Salt and Light, INC., is comprised of community members who have demonstrated their commitment to the concept of a new splash pad, and whereas the Town Council is appreciative of the time, energy, and commitment that this organization is willing to commit in pursuit of this goal. Now therefore be it resolved that the Town Council of the Town of Withfull, Virginia, hereby supports the concept of a new splash pad in the Town of Withfull. Be it further resolved that the Town Council of the Town of Withfull, Virginia, supports the efforts of Salt and Light Incorporated to fundraise for a splash pad project in the Town of Withfull, adopted this ninth day of December, 2024.
Thank you, Ms. Holten.
Thank you.
All right, so at this time, I need a consideration by Town Council to approve the resolution supporting the concept of a splash pad project in downtown Withfull. Need a motion? Have a motion? Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Right here, none. This would be a roll call vote. Mr. Gilman?
Gilman, aye.
Patterson, aye.
Taylor, aye.
Atkins, aye.
Johnson, aye.
All right, and it's unanimous. Ayes having. So next on the agenda.
Madam Chairman, I have a motion I'd like to make, please, for the board. I hereby move that this council appoint Mr. Steve Moore as the interim town manager. This council authorizes the town attorney to prepare a written contract. This council authorizes the mayor to sign the contract on our behalf. Mr. Moore will begin his term as interim town manager on December 16th, 2024.
All right, thank you. So I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Is there, is there any further discussion? Any further discussion? All right, here are none. This will be a roll call vote. Start with Mr. Johnson?
Johnson, aye.
Atkins, aye.
Taylor, aye.
Patterson, aye.
Gilman, aye.
All right, ayes having. Congratulations.
Mr. Moore.
Thank you.
All right, so next on the agenda is Citizens Period, and we do have a couple of people who have signed in to approach council, and the first one would be Mr. Mike Forrest. Come on up, Mike. If you please try to get into the, say your name, your address, and please speak into the mic. We're just having a lot of problems.
Mike Forrest, 630 East Withers Road. This concerns a splash pad. The council seems to be predetermined and moving at light speed to this without a lot of information to the public. I have heard rumors that we're talking about $1.6 million. How's that going to impact the town's budget? How's, who's going to want to pay for it? I know you're trying, just from this recent resolution, to raise money, but that's a lot of money to raise. What's the ongoing cost of this? It's got to be maintenance cost, supplies, cleaning of facilities. None of that has come out to the public yet, and yet the council is moving at light speed to move into this. I think the public needs information before more money's spent. Last meeting, you spent almost $60,000, $25,000 for a feasibility study, $34,000 and change for site preparation on land that the town does not even own. Has a lease been worked out with the school board for this ongoing? That's a lot of money to put on land that you don't own. I think the public needs more information before this thing keeps rolling downhill, and it's not, you're not open with information about this. I've seen nothing officially about this, other than everybody loves it, everybody's jumped on the wagon. The resolution talks about the economic value for it. I have no idea what type of economic value that's going to be. I don't think parents are going to leave there and go to Grays Hole Main for kids in wet bathing suits. I have no idea what that could be. If you could shed some light on what the economic value would be, I would appreciate it. And spread some light on the cost to the town. How's that going to impact the taxpayers? Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor Taylor, if I may speak just one second, I would like to make a correction. The $25,000 that was spent was a, it was a donation. It was a donation, sir. It was, but it was a donation. That money was donated to the town. It was donated to the town, though, but it was not the town's money.
Okay.
But it was donated to us. Thank you.
Ms. Holten, would you have a comment about the property and ownership? And we have been doing our due diligence and checking a lot of those boxes, if you'll address that just a little bit.
Yeah, well, thank you for your comment this evening, and as we all know, there are multiple steps ahead as it relates to the splash pad. So I feel very positive that a lot of those conversations will be happening in this chamber as, as open meetings and as this project evolves. The town does have a lease agreement with the county for the jail property, which is where the old bleacher site was. At this time, we are conducting a feasibility study to see if the proposed splash pad could be located on that property. But we honestly won't know until after the feasibility study if that will be the site of the splash pad or not. So it's very much baby steps at this point in time, and I'm sure once we do the feasibility study, those results will be shared with council, and at that time, we can talk more about the lease with the county and negotiations with the county about either extending the lease or other opportunities to secure that property, should we use it for the splash pad.
Mike, come back up to Mike, please.
Mike to Mike.
Mike to Mike.
Will that feasibility study include any of the economics that's involved in this? Or is it just for the site preparation?
We can certainly ask the consultant if they can do an economic analysis for us. We are meeting with the consultant on Thursday, and so we will add that to the list of topics to discuss with them. You know, one of the things that has been talked about, about the economic benefits would be the multiplier effect of individuals who may want to travel to Withfull from outside the area to Withfull to use the splash pad. And, and while they may not go to the Edith Bowling Wilson Restaurant, they may want to go to Skeeter's or other locations downtown to, to support Withfull businesses.
That is very difficult to qualify.
Absolutely.
And would like to see a reasonable estimate. I'm not, the people doing this, the study, are they qualified to do the economics end of it?
We will certainly ask. So thank you.
And we have discussed that we would also talk to the county about this as well, right?
Absolutely.
We brought that, yes.
Okay, any other discussion on that subject? All right, so the next person who has signed in is Mr. Charlie Jones.
Well, hello, everyone. As you know, we had the Town of Withfull Christmas Parade this past Saturday. Everything went well. Thank you all for being in the parade and attending. Thank you to our grand marshal and everyone associated with that, everyone who was in the parade. And we also just wanted to give a big thanks to all the town departments that helped with this, police, fire, EMS. That's a lot of town to keep secure and to keep people safe, and they really do a lot of hard work on that. And we also want to give a huge shout out to Parks and Rec for helping with this event, and especially to all the people with Public Works that do everything related to it. So we just wanted to thank everyone. And then we also wanted to thank Councilman Gilman for four years of service on the Downtown Withfull Board, and we wish him luck. Thanks.
And looks like the last one is Mr. Arthur Johnson. You want to come to the podium, please, sir, and state your name and your address and make a good attempt to talk into the mic.
Well, I came to talk a little bit about the splash pad, but they put that on hold. But if it's the money that, that you're talking about, Pepsi do things for the schools. Gatorade, they're on TV where they do things. Go ask them for the money. They'll do it. Write it down. Tell them that you put their name on the splash pad. Anything's for the kids. You shouldn't, we shouldn't even have a discussion on it. We should be willing to do it without anything, without even thinking about it. Now the next thing. Thank you for putting all the veterans on Main Street. I'm a disabled veteran, 100% disabled veteran. And to see my picture down there, you know, I didn't know I looked that good. But anyway, I'm just joking. I'm just joking. I just think that we need to loosen up when we have meetings. But anyway, that's great. Next year, I hope there will be many, many more. And so I know I'm going to get some more people to do it. But anyway, thank you so very much. You heard what I, my opinion about the splash pad. Shouldn't be no money thing. Thank you.
Thank you for your service, sir. I do not have anybody else signed up, but does anybody else need to come to the podium? So next on the agenda is upcoming meetings from Town Clerk Sherri Corbin, please.
Yes, ma'am, I have several. The Withfull Planning Commission meeting scheduled for Thursday, December 12th, has been canceled due to the Christmas holidays, and our next regular meeting is scheduled for Thursday, January 9th, 2025, at 6:00 PM. Downtown Withfull Incorporated will meet on Monday, December 16th, at 5:30 at the Downtown Withfull office. The Withfull Redevelopment and Housing Authority will meet on Wednesday, December 18th, at 12:00 noon at the Housing Authority office. The New River Regional Water Authority will meet on Thursday, December 19th, at 10:00 AM at the Austonville Water Plant. The Town Council meeting scheduled for Monday, December 23rd, at 5:00 PM has been canceled due to the Christmas holidays. The municipal offices will be closed and all services curtailed beginning Tuesday, December 24th, through Thursday, December 26th, due to the Christmas holidays. The municipal offices will be closed and all services curtailed on Wednesday, January 1st, 2025, due to the New Year's holiday. The Withfull Recreation Commission will meet on Wednesday, January 8th, at 5:30 at the Withfull Recreation Center. And last, the next Town Council work session will be held on Monday, January 13th, at 4:00 PM, followed by the regularly scheduled meeting at 5:00 PM here in the council chambers. That's all I have there, Mayor.
Thank you for that. Next, we'll go into council member time. We'll start with Ms. Johnson.
Currently, I do not have anything.
Okay, Ms. Atkins.
The only thing I was going to say is great job on the parade. It was awesome. A lot of people there came out. Great weather, better than last year. Commend all the departments as well, but thank you. That's it.
And I'll pass at this point. Vice Mayor?
Nothing at this time.
Mr. Gilman, and don't say nothing.
For one time, I wasn't planning on. I just want to thank all of council, Attorney Paul Castle, Elaine Holden, and everyone for their support in the last four years. It's been a blessing and a privilege for me to have served the citizens of Withfull. Thank you.
We appreciate your service, sir. Thank you very much.
It was a pleasure to serve with you, Mr. Gilman. You're going to be missed. I don't have anybody pick on.
I'll show up.
Thank you for your service.
Thank you, Mr. Gilman, very much. Thank you.
All right, well, if there's nothing else at this point coming from council, council finds it necessary to go into a closed session pursuant to 2.2-311A11 to discuss the discipline of an employee of the public body. So we are now going to go back in closed session.
So moved.
A motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Ayes having. Any opposed? All right, we are now in closed session.
After the closed meeting, it is now necessary to reconvene into open session by stating that the town council is now in open session. A motion is necessary to certify that only matters lawfully convening the open session were discussed. I need a motion?
So move.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion of second. Is there any further discussion? Right here, none. This is going to be a roll call vote, please. Ms. Johnson?
Johnson, aye.
Atkins, aye.
Taylor, aye.
Patterson, aye.
Yoman, aye.
All right. So that motion passes. We are now in open session. We do not have anything else on the agenda. So if it's okay with everybody, meeting is adjourned.